Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the citizen's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage. And your participation. The minutes for three thirteen twenty-three, three twenty-two, twenty-three were received. Are there any corrections? If not, the minutes withstand as submitted. Consent agenda. We will entertain one motion for this. Acceptance of additional state homeland security grant fund. Thirty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars for city county administration building security upgrades. And authorize the city manager to sign the obligating document for award. And the second one is. Recreating the Helena Public Arts Committee as a City of Helena Advisory Committee. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve.
No, just yeah.
A little bit sorry.
Yeah. Comments or questions? Do you have any public comments on this issue? Okay. Now.
Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertler.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries forward to zero.
Thank you. Commission proposals from the commissioners. Moving along, city attorney report.
Mayor Commissioners, I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. City managers report.
Mayor Commissioners, I have nothing to report to say.
Moving along. Report from the Helena Citizens Council. Representative Ben Kuiper. Uh, do we have him online? Madam Clerk. You have to floor. Yeah. Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. My name is Ben Kuiper. I'm a District Two representative with the Helena Citizens Council. Uh, we had a good meeting last Wednesday. Uh, Craig Marr from the Parks Department came and spoke to us about tennis courts in the city and how they're maintained. And um, and how the funding is allocated for repairs. Uh, he was very informative and it was a great conversation. We have formed our budget committee and we're looking forward to uh continuing our annual process of listening in. On the budget recommendations and making uh recommendations to you all. Uh, this May slash June, we're going to start. A canvassing campaign where we're going to go out and talk to our constituents and uh. Learn about issues that they're experiencing themselves and hopefully get. That information compiled and uh put into a nice document we can send you all. And last, our next meeting will be April twenty-sixth, the fourth Wednesday of April. And instead of the city county building, we're going to be in the civic center. That will be. Because we're holding our strategic planning meeting. Uh, that'll be starting at six uh and go till nine. And for the commissioners and any public that's listening, uh, that's going to be an in-person meeting only. Um, we'll have the details posted on our website. That's all I got. So if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Kuiper. Comments or questions? From the public? Thanks. Regular items. Consider a resolution distributing railroad urban renewal tax. District tax increment financing fund to the City of Helena, open lands, parks and recreation. Departments for installation of a mural along Centennial Trail. Uh, I see Matt, I see uh senior planner Ray is up here, so I guess she's going to deliver that. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, this evening, as you mentioned, you're considering a resolution for um distribution of railroad tax increment financing dollars. Um, for the installation of a mural, um, this would be installed in the um underpass pedestrian walkway connecting Centennial and Memorial Trails. Um, the full hundred and thirty feet in length of that um tunnel will be covered in a mural. First cleaned by the Parks Department, have a mural installed, um, and then have multiple layers of anti-graffiti coating put on top of it, um, to. Protect the mural, ensure its longevity. Um, the application for this project was submitted by the Helena Public Art Committee Chair, um, who was with us tonight, Amanda Reese. Um, in January, and it was brought before the Railroad Tax Improvement Financing Advisory Board in February and was unanimously recommended for funding approval for fifty percent of the project costs. The overall cost is fifteen thousand five hundred dollars and the request is seven thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Um, and when installed, they're, they're going to seek uh bids for the installation of the mural that will particularly pay homage to the railroad districts distinct history and economic and cultural importance. Um, I do want to clarify, uh, the motion language, language is actually incorrect. There were some emails going around and phone calls this morning to clarify the fact that um instead of reading that. The funds would be paid to the City of Helena's open park, open lands, parks and recreation department. It actually is to be paid to the city's um community facilities department. So I just wanted to put that on the record that the draft resolution is incorrect and would be corrected by the city attorney's office if asked by you this evening. Um, but if you have any questions for me about the proposal or likewise for um Chair Reese, I'm happy to answer those for you.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Ms. Ray, you said to the Community Facilities Department.
Correct.
Thank you.
Do you have any public comments?
Oh, Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Amanda Reese and I am the current Chair of the Public Art Committee. Uh, we've been developing this project for quite some time and we're really excited to see these blank concrete walls activated with vibrant public art. We've received over fourteen submissions from artists and we'll be reviewing those at our next meeting on April eleventh. And uh during our research, we identified this tunnel as a gateway into the railroad urban renewal district and realized the project aligned with the goals of the railroad district. Goal number one being to emphasize the district's, district's historic importance. Uh, we did provide a document with the call for artists outlining the history of the railroad district. And special consideration will be given to applications that incorporate that distinct history. Uh, we hope that this project inspires others within the railroad district to explore creative ways to tell the story of its unique history and create a sense of community in place through art. As well as a goal number five of the uh application, which was to address public infrastructure needs. Uh, this public art installation will engage citizens, increase foot traffic and increase attractiveness of an otherwise forgotten throughway. Uh, we have, we're going to plan to install signage at the tunnel marking it as a waypoint and entry into the railroad district and helping to define a distinct, distinct zone of Helena. Uh, this project is a small cost with community benefit. Um, and total project costs are approximately five dollars a square foot, which is a fraction of the usual total costs for public art murals of this size. After completing the Centennial Trail Tunnel Project this summer, H-PAC plans to commission public art murals for the Lendale Tunnel on the south side of Centennial Park in two thousand twenty-four. Uh, thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you, Amanda. Comments or questions from the commission?
Thank you, Mr. Mary. Do you have a question for Ms. Reese? I'm very excited about this project. I think it's going to be awesome. Um, do you know, so April eleventh is when you'll, you'll decide on, on who the artist will be. Do you know when, what the timeline is for completion?
Yes, so we're asking that the art is fully installed by August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, we're hoping to, you know, select the artist and award the contract by about May and then. Figure out a timeline with the artist this summer that works with, with them and the Parks Department and all other associated votes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Uh, Ms. Reese, thank you very much. I'm excited about this project. It, you mentioned the, the, the date of August thirty-first. Is that when you're going to have a ribbon cutting or where you have a, an event?
Uh, we would definitely love to have a ribbon, ribbon cutting of some sort. Uh, we'll plan on. Planning that around whenever the artist is able to uh complete the mural or guessing it'll take about two to three weeks to complete and then after that time, we'll be able to select a. A time for that ribbon cutting.
Any comments from the public? Thank you so much for the presentation. Okay, um, with that. What are we doing? We consider a resolution, yes.
I'll be happy to make a motion. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve a resolution distributing railroad urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to the City of Helena's Community Facilities Department. Um, for the installation of a mural along Centennial Trail.
I would second. It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any finer comments? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertler.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries forward to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution annexing property described as track two A. On the certificate of survey filed as document number. Five, seven, nine, three, nine, eight, B. In Lewis and Clark County into the City of Helena, Montana. Planner Ray, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, the history on this property is that it came before you last February, on February twenty-eighth. Um, for consideration of a resolution intention to annex. Um, uh, Joe Nissler is the property owner. He submitted his application in twenty-twenty-one, as I recall. Um, and it made it wait, it's way to you for consideration last February. Um, you unanimously passed that resolution intention of annex. Um, with a number of conditions of annexation attached to them, all of which the applicant has satisfied in the intervening year. Um, the property is uh fully pre-zoned. A final passage for the pre-zoning to our three residential occurred on March twenty-eighth of last year. Um, and the applicant is excited to get ready on the development of seven fourplexes, so twenty-eight more units of housing along Green Drive. Um, with that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions about the project. Um, and the applicant, Joe Nissler is present if you have questions as well.
Thank you, Planner Ray. Comments or questions from the commission? Do you have any public comments?
Uh, commit, city commissioners in Helen and, and the mayor, glad to be here, happy to be here. It's been a long process to get this annexed. And just want to um. Explain what I'm doing down there, just real briefly and won't take up much time. Seven fourplexes and more. Uh, workforce, lower, you know, cost of rent. We're going to start out with a, some two-bedroom, one-bath units down there in that twelve fifty range, twelve hundred range. Which we're getting around town elsewhere, um significantly less than Remington or any other apartments around town. And so we're excited to um. Get going ASAP on this and thank you all for your help and we have a few more things coming down the pipeline that will be up and running in the next years to come. So. Thank you for the opportunity and working.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before um you run off with question, that's okay. Um, what, what's your timeline for completion and getting this rented out?
Well, I'll take you from the beginning of this. Um, we've been in the annexation process for. Just uh maybe a year and a half or so. We will have. The first, we intend, we have everything. We've had the plans ready to go to submit to the city for nine months now, ready to go. Uh, we're going to submit those tomorrow at eight o'clock in the morning, if you guys approve it tonight. Um, we have already started on the infrastructure down there. We just started clearing dirt today. We will have the first units ready to rent the first fourplex conditional upon, you know, city approval and so forth by July fifteenth. So that'll be the first building. The last one will be done before the snow falls and landscape before the snow falls. I intend to get that done and I have a pretty good track record of getting stuff done in a timely manner around here. I have. Uh, eighteen acres that I just bought down on the Q right below that, that was already annexed into the city that we're diligently working on, trying to get some septic capacity on, some chomp at the bit to finish that. To go down and hope to put some more units on, on that property down below.
Congratulations.
Yeah, well, thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, so.
Snow, snow falling to Mars, so.
Yeah. All right, touche. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, Madam Clerk. Oh.
No, sir.
Mr. Mayor. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve a resolution annexing property described as track two A on the certif, certificate. Certificate of survey filed as document number five, seven, nine, three, nine, eight dash B in Lewis and Clark County into the city of Helena.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertler.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries forward to zero.
Thank you. Public hearing. Consider a resolution to, to vacate a portion of the alley right of way north of nineteen forty University Street. Between University Street and St. Andrews School. See, Director Leland is up, so there you go. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner.
Like we said, technical difficulties will be experienced, so. Just letting you know.
All right, we'll go forward with this one. This is a vacation of an alley right of way located between nine forty University Street and St. Andrews School. Uh, there is a small portion of right of way that dead ends and does not continue on through the whole block. Uh, there's a small section you can't see in your packet that uh. The right of way, the alley comes from the other way and dead ends. Then there is no right of way that never was um. Set forth in the flat to be right of way and then a small portion of the alley again. Uh, it is undeveloped. Uh, the property owner wishes to vacate it. St. Andrews School. Uh, does not wish to have half of the right of way. It's not very big. It's only nine hundred and ninety-five uh square feet, so it's small. They are not interested. They're not interested here. You can see as the alley goes here and then this small portion. Does not connect, so it's kind of an orphan uh right of way that's out there. Uh, St. Andrews School does not want their portion of it, so the owner Alan Bach. Uh, has petition to have it uh vacated and go to his property so that he has a little more on the triangular piece of property uh located here. And with the fee, uh, transfer fee of nine dollars and fifty-three cents, the cost to be able to vacate the property and transfer it to them is three thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Leland. Comments or questions from the uh commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk. Oh, are you coming up? Yeah, sure.
I'm Alan Bach. I'm the one that petitioned to vacate the alley. And it's just, I have a leftover triangular piece of property there that I've never been able to do anything with it except make it part of my yard, but we also can't access it. Because of the elevation that's there. So years ago, the county came and asked me to vacate it and I, I said, sure, but St. Andrews School didn't want to. Give up their half at that time, so we just revisited it recently and it will allow us to have access and it's never been used for anything else. Except uh lawn for my wife to mow for six years. So I, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I've moved to approve a resolution to vacate a portion of the alley right of way located between nineteen forty University Street and St. Andrews School with the entire. Right of way going to lot one of block one eighty-four of the Bradford Edition.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertler.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries forward to zero.
Thank you. Consider an ordinance amending City of Helena ordinance number three, zero, nine, seven and official zoning map of the City of Helena. That changes the zoning district from R two residential to R four residential. For properties legally described as the north half of the lot thirteen to sixteen in block thirty-nine. Of the Broadwater Edition. And the south half of lots thirteen through sixteen in block thirty-nine of the Broadwater Edition. Both to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County. Montana. I see Planner Alvarez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Yeah, okay.
So, um, this is to consider a resolution, um, uh. Amending the City of Helena ordinance number three, zero, nine, seven and the official zoning map for the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from R two residential. To R four residential for properties legally described as the north half of lots thirteen through sixteen and block thirty-nine of the Broadwater Edition and the south half of lots thirteen through sixteen and block thirty-nine of the Broadwater Edition. Both in the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and better uh an address as thirteen twelve Harrison Avenue. So these properties are generally located on the southwest corner of Harrison Avenue and Wilder Avenue between the alley and Wilder Avenue. And the City of Helena is uh seeking a zone change to R four residential office from the R two zoning district. The R four district provides a, a buffer district between the R two and the E two districts that is currently missing in that area. And R four offers a greater mix of land uses that better reflects, better reflects the mixed land use designation from the growth policy. The R two residential district provides for residential dwellings and limited non-residential development that protects and enhances the residential nature of the area. The R four residential office district provides for a compatible mix of higher density residential development with professional and business offices and associated service uses. Uh, to amend the ordinance, we need to consider MCA section seventy-six, two, three, oh, four, two, A through E, and in doing so, staff has found. That a zone change from the R two to R four doesn't present a zone change in the overall safety and fire and other dangers in the area. The City of Helena's expected trip generation numbers for R four are greater than they are for R two. However, the size of the properties uh is too small to require further investigation. The current zoning sees the worship facility operating as legal, non-conforming. Uh, and thirteen twelve Harrison Street operating in violation of the committed land use. This area of the neighborhood is located near an arterial and these properties are um currently serve in the role of buffer between the commercial corridor and the residential neighborhood. The properties are potentially more economically viable with a greater range of. The two thousand nineteen Helena growth policy land use chapter and future land use map identifies the neighborhood proposed pre-zone area as mixed use. Properties along the Upland Avenue arterial are similarly designated as mixed use. Property in the neighborhood to the north is designated as urban and the growth policy also includes several goals and objectives that are applicable. Uh, objective seventy-six, which is um. Primary focus here is the implementation of the master plan. Um, that would be to bring this area more in line with the mixed use designation. Where objective eighty, it was um to support more compact land use patterns and objective eighty-six, um. The redevelopment of underutilized properties with mix of uses. Uh, the proposed zoning in R four allows for more flexibility in the development of properties that are in a potentially awkward transition area between commercial and residential districts. And staff concludes that the proposal is consistent with the two thousand nineteen Helena growth policy and is consistent with all Montana zoning criteria. Uh, this was legally noticed in the Helena IR. Uh, neighbor notices were mailed to adjacent property owners and a sign was placed on the premise. No public uh comments have been received up until. The zoning commission uh recommends that uh approval of an ordinance amending City of Helena ordinance number three, zero, nine, seven and the official zoning map. For the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from R two residential to R four residential office where properties legally described as the north half of lots thirteen through sixteen and block thirty-nine. Of the Broadwater Edition and the south half of lots thirteen through sixteen and block thirty-nine of the Broadwater Edition. That's the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana.
Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
For Mr. Alvarez, um, the property that's adjacent to the alley, what's its current use? So its current use is that of a single dwelling unit. It was uh purchased by a woman to move her. Uh, she has like a, a tags and. Registration business for cars. And she has moved her office in there and. She originally brought the zone change to us, um. After she was caught going through the business permitting process, uh, trying to, to get her business into. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Alvarez.
Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, yep. So uh, this actually, I've been watching this house for quite a while because just on the block from me and it was on the market for a really long time this last year. Um. And I guess I'm curious, so on the other side of the alley, it's the tire shop and then the church is, is next door. Um, and so if. Essentially, she's requesting this zone change. essentially, she's requesting this zone change to be able to run her business out of it, if there are additional I'm, I'm just wondering, I mean, it's pretty obviously a single family home. Um if there are additional changes to the use of the house, is that something that comes back to us? I also would expect that it, like, for example, if there was going to, it was going to be repurposed, it's a like, very old home, like, or I don't know when it was built, but I'm going to guess late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds. Um would that, I'm assuming that would trigger the demolition permit piece, but I'm just curious about the future of that lot with this change.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So uh I think uh, when city staff was, was analyzing potentials and changes and how to handle this, uh it was important since the, the rear of this abuts the, it, it's part of half that block is R two and the rear of it um, abuts the residential neighborhood.
Yeah.
That we try um in some way to, to better keep the form factor over there as opposed to, to bringing B two over, which um which is also adjacent as um, and, and bringing commercial directly into neighborhood. So we think there's a um, RO allows for uh, it doesn't allow for retail, but it does allow for a, a large number of offices that could go in there. Uh, if that building were to be torn down and rebuilt as an office, it would still be with the setbacks and the total form factor that's allowed in uh, R four more in keeping with the R two, so that's, that's why we think there's this potential for a little bit of a buffer there, where we go from the B two commercial, fairly heavy commercial use over to the R two.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any public comments? I'll entertain a motion. Commissioners.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Let's see, make sure I'm on the right page here. Right there, yeah. I would move approval of an ordinance amending city of Helena ordinance number number three, zero, nine, seven, and the official zoning map for the city of Helena that changes the zoning district from R two residential to R four residential for properties legally described as the north half of lots thirteen through sixteen and block thirty-nine of the Broadwater Edition and the south half of lots thirteen through sixteen in block thirty-nine of the Broadwater Edition, both to the city of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtlet.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
Consider a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow a residence multiple dwelling units, three or more units used in the R three T number twelve residential zoning district for property legally described as lot seventeen through nineteen in block sixty-six of the Cana addition to the city of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. Planner Alvarez, you have the floor. It's Mayor. People in the back can hear you, that all that matters. Well, um I hear the people online are struggling to hear you, so you may want to use the microphone.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Once again, I am Michael Alvarez, and I'm a planner with the Community Development Department. This is a conditional use permit for one thousand Cannon Street, and uh more specifically, this is consideration of a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow a residence multiple dwelling units, three or more units used in the R three T number twelve residential zoning district for property legally described as blocks seventeen through nineteen and blocks, uh, it's lot seventeen through nineteen and block sixty-six of the Canyon addition to the city of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. This property is being located at one thousand Cannon Street. So this property is generally located on the northwest corner of Cannon Street and Lincoln Street. This land is presently vacant and last had the land use designation of a single dwelling unit residential. The applicant property owner is looking to obtain a conditional use permit to allow a multiple dwelling unit residence in the R three residential T number twelve zoning district. Multiple dwelling unit residential is allowed by right in uh, zoning district R three. However, the R three T number twelve transitional district overlay requires a CUP for any other use than a single dwelling unit. The T districts are to be treated as temporary um in city code, and this T district appears to conflict with the twenty nineteen growth policies designation of the area as mixed use. Uh, multiple dwelling units residents, a building containing three or more dwelling units for occupancy by three or more groups living separately from each other, including condominiums. R three residential district, it is the intent of the district to provide for the development of a mixture of residential structures to serve varied housing needs and allows limited compatible non-residential use. And the growth policy area designation of mixed use is places where people can work, live, and play and learn, and these areas include a variety of complementary and integrated uses such as, but not limited to, all forms of residential office, light industrial manufacturing, retail, entertainment or public uses, development, it's usually in a denser comprehensive pattern to achieve a unified, functional, efficient, and aesthetically appealing physical setting, and provides opportunity for connectivity, public transportation, and walkability. Mixed use areas do not use the traditional segregation of uses. So here's the site plan of the proposed structure. Um, it's going to be uh, a roughly thirty-five hundred, uh, sixty-four square foot building. Um, with parking in the rear. Uh, one thing I'd like to note is there's a dumpster there uh, towards the alley in the back. Um, and the elevations, uh, when I first reviewed this, um, I thought there was one additional parking spot here. Uh, and I will get back to that in a moment. In evaluating a conditional use permit, uh, the the uh eleven, three, four, A are the standards that must be met, and the criteria by which we evaluate whether or not the standards have been met are found in eleven, three, four, B. Um, eleven, three, four, C allows us to place conditions on the property, uh, either uh, if the findings in eleven, three, four, B can be made. So the findings, there exists several multiple dwelling unit residences on the block and in the vicinity of the proposed structure. The proposed structure is similar in its massing to the buildings adjacent to it. The applicant has already received approval from the city commission for a similar residential multiple dwelling unit located in the same zoning district at twelve forty Cannon Street in twenty twenty-one. City of Helena future land use map designates this area as mixed use, and our residential multifamily uh, fits into that category. Um, this proposal uses some on-street spaces to meet its off-street parking requirement as is allowed under eleven, twenty-two, nine, D. There are only four off-street parking spaces, including ADA that uh, would be access off of the alley. This means the total number of units in the building could be eight, if there were four on, uh sorry, four on-street parking spots as well. Uh, in your staff report, uh, this was listed as a nine-unit building, but the, with only four onsite parking spots, they would be uh, maximum would be eight. I had a phone conversation with the architect today. They, they are all uh, the partial proximity, proximity to other non-residential uses provides the opportunity for the future residents of the con- uh, of the condos to use non-vehicular means of transportation to go about their daily activities, and the proposal will meet the district dimensional standards and not require a variance. This was legally noticed in the Helena IR. Neighbor notices were mailed to adjacent property owners, and the sign was placed on the premises, and public comments received should have been distributed, distributed with their meeting material. The zoning commission recommends approval of a res- resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow residents multiple dwelling unit, three or more units used in R three T number twelve residential zoning district for property legally described as lots seventeen through nineteen and block sixty-six and in addition to the city of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, with the following conditions. That a, one, a building permit must be submitted for within one year, and two, all conditions must be met within one year of CUP approval as per section eleven, three, nine Thank you.
You did. Okay, comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I have a question. Um, so if we thank you for moving head to the parking, because I have my question is the parking um, issue, so should this be approved today, we are, it would be the maximum number of units that they could build is eight. Um, and still meet our parking requirements, is that accurate?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. That is accurate.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments from the Commission? Public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
I have no public comment online at this time.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the approval of resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow residents multiple dwelling units, three or more units used in the R three T number twelve residential zoning district for property legally described as lots seventeen through nineteen and block sixty-six of the Cannon addition to the city of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, for the following conditions. Number one, a building permit must be submitted within one year. Number two, all conditions must be met within one year of CUP approval as per section eleven dash three dash nine of Helena city code.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtlet.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the Commission? Do we have any hands raised online, Madam Clerk?
Mayor and Commissioners, I have no hands raised and no public comment online at this time.
Any finer discussions from the Commission? This meeting is adjourned.